Looks like we are, you ready? Looks like we're ready to go. Six thirty-two-ish, beginning the Montpelier Roxbury Board of School Directors meeting for Wednesday, October 5th. First order of business is public comment. I see Chris is here, and there's a few people on the phone. Looks like James has raised his hand. Anyone else on the phone want to speak? If you understand the raise hand function, go ahead and employ it. Otherwise, take yourself off camera and give a little wave.
Can I just ask before we start public comment? I don't think we got the warrant. Is that part of the consent agenda? Because I didn't see one come through, so maybe...
That process, for my finance buddies, that process, we talked briefly about last board meeting around having a different process because the auditors pointed out that it was, we were out of, we're not out of compliance, but we were out of order in terms of consecutive with days and stuff. So Christina is changing that process up in response to what the auditors were telling her.
Got it. And maybe it wasn't even in the consent agenda, and I just got used to seeing it.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, it's not in there, so never mind. Okay, sorry about that.
Christina's also not feeling well, so she may not have gotten it to where she needs to be.
That's okay.
Anyone from the public want to talk? I'll do room first, virtual second. Go for it. Please introduce yourself for the audience.
Sure. Hi, everybody. My name is Christopher Curtis. I'm a parent of two kids in the Montpelier schools, one in high school, one in the middle school. And I understand that you all are going to be considering the question of improvements to the athletic facilities at the high school. So I know there's been a lot of discussion in town, and as a parent of two student athletes, I wanted to just come forward and share my perspective on it. First, I want to preface this first by just thanking you all for the time and consideration you've given to all of this. I know it's been a lengthy process already and likely to be lengthier still, and there are no easy answers. And I also realize that the public schools are here to serve all of our child health and other aspects of their educational experience, but it's not the sum total of anything. We have huge issues to address throughout the whole district, and I really appreciate all the work that you all do. So thank you for that and for your service on the board. And however you resolve all the issues related to facilities, one way or the other, it's not going to be the end of the world one way or the other. So I'm just here with a particular interest in exploring the possibility for adding a turf component to the redesign of the track, because it's track and field, and there has to be a field to go with the track. So I assume that no matter what happens with the redesign of the track, something is going to happen with the field, whether it's a grass surface redesign and refill, or whether it's a turf. And I understand turf is being considered. My kids have very much enjoyed experiences in other locations around the state accessing turf fields. They've benefited from that use and the expanded seasonal use of turf fields. And I think that there's a lot to be said for having that kind of a surface available to students that would lengthen the seasonal playing time available for all sports. And I think too, it's a huge investment in the track, which is, I understand, long overdue, and I support. But I think in looking at the numbers of students that avail themselves and anecdotally and talking with other athletic directors around the state that manage both track and field infrastructure, the fields just get far more use. It's year-round use because kids will come in the wintertime and literally shovel the field so they can play. And I think that the number of students participating in sports, in field sports, is actually greater in some. If you add in soccer, which is huge, I think it's 77 high school players are playing soccer. You've got a large number playing softball or baseball, they could access to use the fields in their preseason for training purposes. You've got the field hockey teams, you've got lacrosse. The list just goes on and on. So when you add in all of the kids that might be able to take advantage of the extended length of time in a field that requires frankly, in many ways, less maintenance than the grass, especially in inclement weather, it's just, there would be a lot of kids that benefit. So it's a major investment that the board is already considering for the track. I think it's sort of generational. This would be the one time, if you're going to do a major restructuring of those facilities, now would be the time to do both all at once, because I think if you do the one, it's very unlikely that the other is going to get addressed. So I would just urge the board to think holistically. If we're going to make a major investment in the athletic facilities, just consider kind of biting the bullet and saying, hey, let's do one great facility for all kids all at one time. That would be my pitch. I know there are other considerations too, and I trust the board will take into consideration all of the financial, environmental, and other needs of the school as you make this decision. But that was just my perspective on it. I love the fact that you're taking this up, and I know a lot of kids would be very excited to see that change happen. So I hope that's helpful.
Definitely. The phone have James first and then Matt. And again, please introduce yourself for the viewers at home.
Sure. I'm James Eichenberry. I'm a parent of a track and cross-country student athlete, and just came from the Google meet about the facilities committee, and feel a little bit more informed right now about the different options there. I think it's great that the committee explored a lot of options that are out there. I think it, when the cost started to come in, that was a little bit humbling to think about what the initial allocation is, and then what it would cost even just to get the base level of the track up and running. So I think I like the, and would support the option of getting at least the track project up and going, and then thinking about the turf in a phase two, because it looks like the track project can build the foundation from a drainage standpoint to make turf happen. There's tons of students that do track, and one of the things I would encourage us to think about is how the high level of inclusivity of track can also help some other complementary goals in the school district, especially relating to anti-bullying. And it's an incredibly inclusive sport, and so I think we need to think about the mental health and other aspects of track that can frankly complement the education and create the social, emotional learning components that we're looking for for our students. We were talking about net zero as well, that facilities committee, and I think turf would probably need to be something that is discussed from a net zero component. What are the materials and the lifecycle? And it doesn't sound like maybe we'd get 15 years of turf, then you'd have to replace it again. What are the pollution energetic elements of that? We might want to think about that from a net zero standpoint as well. It's worth thinking about. And then also, are there other better locations for other existing fields that would maybe make more sense to do turf than necessarily where the track is? I don't know, but it's just a question that comes to mind. But I really hope that, as I shared in the other committee, and I'll share here, that we don't make the perfect the enemy of the good. If we have a great project that we can move forward with, that gets us moving in the right direction and benefits a lot of folks, and also, I think, all other sports and gym classes would benefit from the track as well, that I hope that we'd find a way to move forward. I also think there's a lot of public enthusiasm, there's a lot of track users that are not even related to the school, who I think would be very excited community members, and hopefully also willing to pitch in and do whatever fundraisers, bake sales, whatever we need to do to find the other funds, or frankly, writing grants. I saw a big plaque on the tennis courts showing how funding was achieved through that, and that makes me wonder if that might be another funding source that we could tap into to maybe fund the track. So I'll leave it at that, but I hope that we keep moving forward and make good things happen. So thanks, you all.
Thank you, Jim. Matt, again, please introduce yourself for the camera.
Sure. I don't think my video is working, so I want to make sure the audio is working.
Yeah, audio is working fine. No biggie on the camera.
I'm sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Smith. I am the parent of two boys, one of which graduated from Montpelier in 2020, Peyton Smith, and then I have also another son who's a graduate, who graduated here in 2024, who's a junior and resident of Montpelier, and extremely proud to be a part of our community. I want to start off first and just say thanks to Libby, and thanks to our school leadership, both principals and vice principals of past, and then the school board as well, especially over the last two and a half years. It has been a very tough going, and we recognize that it's been tough going, and we're very appreciative of our leadership, all the way up to including the superintendent, and then all the way down through our school board to make what's happened, happened over the past two and a half years. We specifically moved to Montpelier from overseas, where I was in the Air Force for 29 years, and my final assignment was at Norwich University, where I served as the Professor Aerospace Studies. And I also served as, my final year, the Dean of the College of National Services, which was in charge of all ROTC cadets at Norwich. And it's through that lens and that context that I would like to voice my support for the track and field infrastructure, just to include the turf aspect of the field. And like folks know, college is a year-round endeavor, and for me, in that role that I served down at Norwich, I was there every day through winter, spring, summer, and fall. And I can tell you that the turf field at Norwich saved our curriculum, especially during the COVID time. In other words, having a field in which we could go out on that was plowed, because you can plow a turf field, and be able to go outside the dorm, and to be able to do all the things that we needed to do to maintain a safe distance and so on and so forth, was incredible. And you can be out there rainshine, there's no mud issues, there's no field issues, there's no maintenance, large maintenance considerations, other than just, again, just moving the snow out of the way in the wintertime, which it does obviously snow a lot here, and winter is a large portion of the school year. And I can tell you, just from the leadership role that I was in at Norwich, and having utilized that field nearly every single day from about mid-August till about the second week in May, it was a game changer. And I can tell you, again, being a coach, both at the middle school level here in Montpelier, and assistant coach helping out our baseball coach in the high school, I can tell you that the fields have been a struggle. And I applaud Matt Link and his efforts, and also some private donors to make the fields much better. The field's writ large to include scoreboards for Peyton Smith Field, and it has gotten better. It's not exceptionally dismal, so I don't want you guys thinking I'm painting the picture that this is not, we are in dire straits. We are making those improvements. But I think at this point in time, I think we have an incredible opportunity to really put some time and effort into that track initiative, and also into the turf field, which will bear, I think, just incredible fruits of our labors and our funding and our resources for years and years to come. And it'll also take pressure off the other fields and allow our limited maintenance resources that we have at the school. And Andrew LaRosa is one of my favorite human beings, who's amazing, who's going to give a presentation here shortly, and without him, we wouldn't have a lot at this school, just like we wouldn't have a lot with all the other folks that are support our MRPS. But I just wanted to unequivocally support this proposal, and I look forward to hearing from Andrew. And again, thank you very much to our school leadership and our school board for their leadership. And I know sometimes it's a thankless job, but I just, from my perspective, my family's perspective, I'm very thankful to be here in Montpelier and be able to be a part of our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. I think that concludes public comment. I don't see your hands. Oh, a bunch of people showed up. Yeah.
You guys want to talk for public comment?
You guys want to talk?
You got it. That was your chance, guys.
Well, you could also email us. You don't, you have an opportunity now, but...
We love them here.
We would.
Yeah, I mean, he covered it pretty well. I would say, even though I'm not going to be here for it as a senior, I think a turf field for the kids coming up would be incredible. So many different sports teams could use it, we could practice there all the time, we could relieve pressure on the other field. The backfield that we practice on sometimes is really, really hard to practice on, like the bums and the divots and whatnot. And so we've resorted to going to Dog River and practicing there, and half of it has a baseball field on it, and people don't pick up their dog poop on the field, and we have to bring a shovel from home to scoop the poop and put it away so that we can practice on the field. So having a turf field to practice on at our school would be, I think, really beneficial for a lot of our programs. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to? We will move on to, because we're going to basically continue this discussion, and thanks, everyone, for the input. It's very, very helpful. To Andrew.
Did you want to speak? We don't have to force you, Jim.
Yeah, we don't have to force you.
I'd be happy to, my friends. I'm sorry for seeking in kind of late, but, boy, I really appreciate Ronnie's and I'm sure others' comments around the impact that having a turf field would make for this community, and the impact that it would mean, and the extension of seasons and accessibility. I know that there's a lot of questions either way, but I appreciate how, this is something that doesn't necessarily impact my family, but I think about future generations. Maybe my youngest would benefit, maybe, but at the same time, I realize that giving this outdoor space to our kids and making it available to them is, could just have a really significant impact. And I want to say, as somebody who has dealt with and struggled with priorities and managed how do we spend public funds, right, I think that there's an opportunity here to realize the community good here. And whether, and I leave it to you to decide what's the best way forward, but it seems to me like this is some, I think that this investment in doing a turf field is the best investment for our community. So does it necessarily have to come from the district budget, or is this something that could be bonded for? But I do think that there could be support. I'm confident that there would be support from the community because it has such an overall benefit for all of us, for all of our kids, to move forward with this. So I just appreciate you considering this. I get the investment piece, but know that I think that there's a broader community support around it.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? Thanks. Andrew?
Please, please, consent agenda.
Oh.
Yes.
You can come up, and then we'll see the consent agenda, and we should approve the consent agenda.
I can motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, consent agenda done. Andrew?
So I guess, Anna, I sent you a document. I'm not sure we're going to get into that document, but did you get it? Check your email?
I did, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Like I said, I'm not sure we're going to get to that point. But what I wanted to give everybody is a little update of where we stand with regards to the track project and the track investigation. About two months ago, we met, we seeked out a group of interested parties, track people and athletics folks and the whole group, and we kind of had a listening session where we kind of went through what are people's desires, what are the needs, what are the aspirations. From that, we met with Engineering Ventures, our consultant on this firm, an engineering firm out of Burlington, who's done plenty of tracks in the state. And we did three exercises. We did a, from the discussion two months ago, it was, there was a real desire to prove out what an eight-lane track would look like and how it would sit on the site. And we kept it to sort of a paper doll exercise of moving it around, and you'd be shocked at how much space an eight-lane track really takes up. It takes up a lot. And they tried that, and yeah, we found some tortured locations, but they ended up making a very short homerun field for the baseball field, and how you, if you moved it here, put that there, how do the fans even get to that event? So it really wasn't a very viable option, but we proved it out. The other two options was a six-lane track with an eight-lane straightaway in the existing location. An alternate on top of that was what would a turf field inside of that look like. They went back and they did some, re-looked at some of their cost estimates, and we looked at a little bit more about, we talked about concession areas and picnic areas and food trucks and all kinds of different things. It sugared down, and I don't know whether we want to show that document or not. If you want to show it, we'll show it. I'm happy. Anna's got it. Do you want to?
He says copy.
Okay. So when it all sugared out, we looked at, Anna, can you bring that up? Let's see if I have mine here. I do have mine here. So we looked at a base project of being a six-lane track with an eight-lane straightaway and drainage to support a future turf field. The drainage supported is not as dramatic as you'd think. We would be doing drainage on the track anyway. A turf field would be permeable, so it would be sort of just upsizing a little bit for those sort of every-hundred-year storm kind of things. There's going to be a need for a maintenance building, so we separated that out. That is, we're not going to, as much as anything, the athletic department is going to need that storage building for all the mats and vaulting equipment and all their equipment on this new field. So we've invested a lot in the last year in maintenance equipment, and we're going to continue to do that, and it's shown results. So we need a facility for that. So when you take that base project, that basically comes down to about $2.4 million if we were going to do that, pave a track out there and create a replacement area for the facilities and maintenance equipment. On top of that, you're probably looking, if we're looking to do the lights, all-new lights out there, and the lights are sort of a piece that we need to do a little more deeper dig on, it's probably another half million on top of that. So when it all comes together, to do that, you're looking at finding another anywhere between $900,000 and $1.5 million beyond the $1.5 million you've already committed towards this project, to get the eight-lane track, grass field, new maintenance facility.
And lighting, is that the high end?
And the lighting, yeah. The high end is with the lighting, yeah. And that number, I think, is, the high end, I think we've got a little bit of flexibility on. But if we were to add a turf field, if you just boil it down, a turf field's going to be about $1.7 million on top of that number. We put in about, you know, there's all that support area that we have. There's been a desire for a press box, and because we're in a floodway, building a whole new structure out there is not a good idea, so I think we'd end up modifying the grandstands that we have. And a concession area, the concession stand that we have now, would not, I think, would end up having to be demolished, not that there's much to demolish, but the idea of setting up a proper concession area, really, the consensus has been more like, we need a place that we can maybe serve some food. A barbecue pit might do just as well, because we just, that's a little more flexible, a little less intense, and would probably serve our needs. And then a picnic area slash shade area, a place for people to gather out of the sun, place for the kids to go when they go, because if you come here on any given day, if the weather's a little bit inclement, they're all crowded underneath by the concession stand, finding a dry place to put on their sneakers. So something of that in nature, but nothing super formal. And then, again, the lighting piece, and that number, I think right now, the engineers and I talked, we think that number is a little bit artificially high right now. It's just big pieces of metal being shipped long distances, and I think that that number might actually come down a little bit, and I think there may be some incentives that we can track down on that sort of thing. But that all-in, if you looked out there, and it was new lights, and it was turf, and it was track, and it was concession, and it was the whole McGill, you're like 5.3 mil. And so that's about 3.8 above and beyond the 1.5 that you've already committed.
Sorry.
A couple of other just things to consider, things that we do need to consider, or that are still in consideration. If there is any hope of sort of getting this project going and breaking ground next year, it's a decision that's going to have to be made quickly. Permitting, design, bidding. One of the good things kind of out of this new construction environment we're in is, you don't have to put bids, it used to be, if you get a bid in right after Christmas or right after New Year's, it was great, you could be the first one. Nobody's bidding a project six months out. Nobody's going to commit to the price. So you actually have a little bit of flexibility. But the bidding environment's a little bit odd right now. But the other thing that we need to, we'll have to just consider moving forward, just so people know, we will probably lose a season either at the beginning of the project or the end of the project. Certainly for track, probably for one of the field sports. We either have to start the project early so that by the end of the summer, we can get our surface in, so you can start the following year running on the track, or we wait until the school year's out, we build our road, and basically have to wait until the next spring to do our paving. Now, that option, I think, actually helps us with regards to the soccer, the lacrosse season, because it doesn't really impact, we're really just waiting, waiting to get the surface in. But we probably wouldn't get done until pretty close to the end of the school year anyway. So we're going to lose that. This is something to keep in mind, and we'd have to go through that. The turf field, it's the maintenance of it and replacement cost of it, this is a field, this is a surface that, as James, I think, had mentioned, was, this is a surface that's going to need to be replaced in 15, 20 years, and it's going to be replaced at about half the cost of that instantly. So whatever the future value of $800,000 is in 20 years, we're going to be looking at that, and we're going to have to do that. Track surface, again, is sort of 15, 20 years, that's much, that is not nearly the replacement cost as the turf field, just because you're kind of just laying a new surface over the old surface.
So can I just, just to get clarity of the costs, track, no lighting, about $2.4 million, you add lighting, you get $3.1 million. You throw in a turf field without lighting, you're at like $4.7 million. You throw in a turf field with lighting, you're at like $5.3.
Yeah.
$5.3 also includes the concession and...
Yeah, yeah. And I just wanted, because to some degree, the turf field absolutely, because what we'll do, what we would do is, if we waited to do the turf field at some point, we'd build a bridge over our track so trucks can go over it to move things out, and that's going to be, not a very tall bridge or very long one, but it's going to be strong. The press box, concession, picnic, we can make that happen. Nothing pivots on that one. And the same thing with the lighting, the lighting...
And our lights aren't broken, right?
Our lights aren't broken. Our lights aren't broken. So it's just, they're, they were put up in 73, so it would be nice to get something a little more energy efficient out there and all that, but we could, we could do that, that's outside of the track, so that's why I kind of broke those out.
So then in terms of like available funding and commitment and timeline, so we have 1.5 million right now that we have committed, which puts us about 900,000 dollars short of the smallest project. And if we do the 2.4 million first, could that be done, it sounds like a candidate, I want to make sure, could that be done in a way that would allow us to do the other projects later?
Yes.
So we, so we could stagger this?
Yeah, that's why I broke them out like this.
And so we could either figure out the funding later or, I mean, would it be, and you might not be the person to answer this, it might be Christine. Yeah, the obvious funding source beyond what we have is a bond. How does the timing of a bond square with the timing of moving this?
Well, it's an interesting, it's an interesting chicken and egg thing. You know, do you design a shovel ready project while you figure out how you're going to pay for it and you've, you've risked the money you've invested in design, but when you get the money, you're ready to go. So that's, that's kind of that, that piece you need to figure out.
I may be talking completely, I'm channeling my inner grand right now.
I remember it takes a little while.
Yeah, it does take a little while.
They don't just, I mean, YABU has to get it approved, but there's hoops with the banks.
Oh, how long to go out and put it together and know that process?
I think we'd probably be able to do it by time meeting day, but it would be more.
Yeah, I think that's a few months kind of thing. You have to get real enough numbers that people are confident that you're going to, what you borrow is going to complete your project and all that, but that's, it's not, that seems...
Could you be a little bit more specific on the need to make a decision soon? I don't think you mean like in two weeks from now, but do you mean by the end of the calendar year?
If I was, if I was channeling my inner civil engineer, I would say, yeah, if you're going to build in a floodway, you've got permitting that you're going to have to go and you have to have a design that's pretty well sorted before you go get those permits. So I do believe if you were, if you had intentions of trying to break ground, even on the most big, now if you, if the decision is, we want to do the turf, well then that all goes out the window because that's a whole nother level of discussion because we have to decide what kind of turf we're going to do. We're going to have to decide if, if the turf goes into the, you know, if we get a flood, those little granulars in that system, what happens when they go into the river? So is that the right system? So again, I think if you decide that you want to do with the turf option, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that you would have any expectation of being able to break ground next year with the turf decision. There's just still a lot of work to be done on that, a lot of discussions and you're going to have the, the people that use it, what's the best turf? You're going to have the environmental concerns, you're going to have to find, that's, the pressure's off on that decision with regards to that.
But if we were to decide to not do the turf right now, what would you say is a dead, could you, could you give us a deadline?
I would say about no later than November 1.
Oh.
Like four weeks?
And if we went later than that, what we're talking about then is we're just waiting a year before we would break ground?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Amada?
So what are the financial implications for the 1.5 million that is already set aside? If we were to say we're going to wait a year to more, more decision-making processes? Is this, I know that we had to rush to put this one, vote on this 1.5 million, so like, can it just sit there until the rest of the process gets?
I think that's the, the best person to answer that question is Christina, who's not here, so, but however, if I use my just critical thinking skills for a minute, and I could be wrong on this, so I just want to put that out there first off, the, you all encumbered that money last fiscal year.
I believe, correct?
Yeah, it was about a year, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was last fiscal year that that money was encumbered and it's held over for this fiscal year, right? So I would imagine it could be held over again. However, Christina may very well have a very different answer to that question.
So, I cannot thank you. The other question I have, so I'm trying to understand, so, some of the things that came out, environmental impacts around the turf and all that will come out of that and, but also thinking holistically. So when you say we put over a bridge around the track, what does that mean? Like it's, is it like more money to be included in this 2 point million?
The bridge would only be one, one lane.
Uh huh.
It's not, it's not around the whole thing, but oh, it certainly is going to cost more to do it later and you have to work around things. You can't just go clear the site and do it. So, so the 1.3 million that we put in here was, there are firms that, it's what they do, it's almost a turnkey type system. They'll engineer the whole thing out. That's, there's pros and cons with that. The pro is it's all done and the con is it's done by somebody who knows where and when there's a problem, who are you calling? So our engineers would be happy to design it for us, but they'd also be happy not to have the liability of it. So I think that's a very, I think you absolutely would have to, to do, add a little extra kicker in there. What that kicker is to do it five years from now, you know, is it, is this just the inflation or is it inflation plus a little something? I'm sure it's inflation plus a little something, just because it's the logistics. Construction is all about the logistics. The building's the easy part. It's where do I pile this pile of dirt while I try to build here? And if you've got to mill, if you've got to move it way over there versus just over here, that's just time and money. So short answer, doing it all at once is going to be the most cost efficient. Staging is going to cost more. What that number is, I don't know.
So my last question is, if we were to do it all, what is the timeline around bonding? How does bonding work? And what happens when the environmental questions come around or like all these things through that process?
That, that's why I think it would take an additional, it's going to take, if we, if we went with a turf option, I think there's just so many questions about that and just the level of sophistication of permitting and, and stormwater design and all that, that it's just, it's, it's more than just a road that you can run on.
Hagan?
What about maintenance costs for, for turf and as opposed to what we have now with just a field?
It's a good question and I would defer a little bit to Matt here as someone who's been at Sabine Field and has seen what maintenance there is, but certainly there is going to be, we're going to have to, after a season of shoveling, you have to, if you do the sort of typical ones with the crushed up whatever, you know, you've got to collect it from the side, you've got to redistribute it. You've got to clean it every now and again, I'm presuming. But I think it is definitely lower, it's definitely lower. The good thing, it would be much, this would be a much easier discussion if our soccer field, our main field was bad, you know, if there was standing water and rocks and all that, it would be a much easier discussion because it would be no brainer. Matt and Kim had done an amazing job on our fields this year and that field, there you go, how does it play?
It's, it's all right. It's definitely not one of the better fields we've played on all year, but it's not like the worst.
Yeah, no, that's... Yeah, if we said it was the best grass field, we would say, well, why are we replacing? If it was the worst, we'd say, of course, we're replacing it. The good thing is, is we're working with Chip Stevens at Diamond Tech, who takes care of the Mountaineers field and U32 and our baseball field. And we have, we're committed to running, doing a sand layer every now and again to help level things out. We're committed to fertilizing twice a year to get the grass stronger. We're, you know, if anybody who came out here at the end of the year, Tom and Kim were out there augering, for lack of a better term, the soil around the goals and all that to get the grass growing early this year, so it was nice and strong when we came back. Again, it's all sort of anecdotal on my part, but at the end of the lacrosse season, you know, you go look at Spalding's football field and it was in tough shape. Came and looked at our field and was like, yeah, that field looks pretty darn good. So there's going to be, and there's going to be some specialized, and there's going to be things like repair, you know? We have to protect that field, right? We're going to have to put a fence around it because, you know, somebody drive, not to say this happens, but somebody drives on a soccer field, you go out there, you rake it up and it's a pain in the neck. Someone goes out and blows donuts on a turf field, I don't know what the repair is for that. And again, that's kind of insurance as much as anything else, but... Those are the questions we still need to figure out.
Okay, so, but do you know the comparison? Is, is the turf field lesser, it costs less to maintain turf field or it costs more to maintain the turf field and what's the, I don't know, maybe you don't have the answer? The difference, are we talking about $10,000 difference? Are we talking about $100,000 difference?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I, the only thing I can, like I said, it can, it's a lot of anecdotes of people who have fields, and I think Matt Link has actually talked to some athletic directors who are very, speak longingly of their fields and how maintenance free they are and you just go out there and you use them.
So anecdotally, it's actually cheaper to maintain the turf?
Potentially.
I think it's cheaper until there's a cata, something catastrophic.
Yeah, 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 okay. And how much, we mentioned, or I heard a bunch of times it mentioned that it's going to expand the season. Is it year round that we can use that or is it expanding for, you know, 20% more?
Well, that gets into, that's another, that's a, that's a good question. It certainly would help in the spring. I mean, we had teams that were chomping at the bit this year to get out there. And we, if we had a turf field, we could have been out a month before, I mean, we canceled two weeks worth of games before, you know, lacrosse player. We canceled two weeks worth of games because it was, the weather was beautiful and the, but it was still wet and everybody was doing it. So I bet this year, we probably could have gotten out there two months early, or a month early before the April break. You know, the plowing in the wintertime and all that, I'll be honest, I don't know what you plow that field with. My guess is it's, there's got to be a little bit of a specialty equipment to that. And Matt would have to speak to, you know, what are we, what are we practicing out there in December? We're kind of in indoor sports at that mode. So Matt would, would probably speak to, if we, if we did it in the wintertime, what would we use it for? But certainly early spring.
Yeah, a couple of competitors have brought up revenue opportunities from a turf field. My understanding is South Burlington was able to generate some revenue. Have you looked into that at all? I mean, is this a project that, that could over time pay for itself or at least pay for part of itself?
See, the thing that, that I struggle with sometimes is the fundraising and the, it's $5 million. That's a lot of, that's a lot of tournaments that we don't have a lot of parking for, that we have to pay a lot of staff to run traffic, you know? I'm, I'm not sure how much you charge to run a tournament. You know, if you're charging $30,000, maybe it is better. Yeah, if you charge 30 grand.
$5 million?
It's 1.6 for the turf, to be clear, folks. It's 1.6 for the turf. It's 5 million for the whole package. I want to be clear.
Yeah, but I'm not, we haven't done that analysis yet?
I guess a budget question, but if we do go with whatever we go with, that's, and that gets our budget up. Does that increase the per people spending? And if it does, then does that adversely affect the funding that we get from state because we are now way above what the average is or what? There is a, there's a formula there, right?
Well, we have a bond now that we're in repayment of, I don't believe that affects the per people spending.
No, it doesn't.
No.
I say that with 90% confidence that it doesn't, but I don't believe it does.
Are you talking about a bond or are you talking about putting money for this into the general, like the ed, gen ed budget?
Well, in, in, in general, I mean, I'm just trying to get the feel of if we go with the bond, oh yeah, we don't have to worry about it. But if you don't go with the bond and go with the, whatever funding there is, then yeah, we have to worry about the other portion. I'm just trying to get a feel of that.
If you don't bond it, then we're paying for it out of whatever we have in our fund balance.
So if you pay out a fund balance and the bond, then it doesn't affect the gen ed per people spending, which means it doesn't affect the, okay?
I mean, if you think about the fund balances money, the district has already collected through taxes and just not used, right? So it's not going to increase taxes if you use that part of it. The bond repayment definitely goes, you'll see information about bond repayment in the budget.
Yeah, I, I remember that the per people spending was used in a formula when we get the, the CLI and things like that. And so if the per people spending is way above what the average is, are, one of those factors go up and which means that, that our taxes just go up. So I'm just curious about that.
Emma, then you had her in a breath.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Emma?
Hi, thanks to everybody who came to speak tonight. I think it's really important to hear from the community when we're making decisions of this nature. I, a couple of things to touch on, to play off of what Annika was just asking. So if we, we've already earmarked 1.5 million dollars from the fund balance, do we have another 1 million dollars to, in the fund balance that we could comfortably put towards this project?
No.
So it doesn't sound like for, if we want to get the track ground broken on the track in spring, it is not going to be paid for by fund balance. It's going to be paid for by, I thought that one of the options was to put the 1.5 million dollars from the fund balance and then add a million dollars to the budget. Is that not one of the options on the table?
Yeah.
If the board votes on the basic piece, then we'd have to present the board with a budget that makes it happen. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes. And then, and then the other option would be to bond the one, the additional 1 million dollars, which could, which sounds like it would probably push the project out of here.
I, I, I have kind of the same question. So it sounds like the, what I'm hearing is that in terms of like getting to the 2.4 million, we have 1.5 million, we'd have to find 900,000. Is there any fund balance that could go towards that or would it all have to come out of?
Yeah, so at the end of the fourth quarter report from last board member...
There's a little bit, right?
It's 652, 652,000, that's what...
Is unreserved fund balance. So I guess we could use some of that, but then the rest would need to come through the regular budget, which means our total budget goes up, which means, you know, we have to collect that.
Regular budget or bond?
Or bond, yeah.
My understanding is that we might be able to get a bond done in time to cover the 2.4 million, but if we wanted to do the whole thing, we'd probably have to wait a year because there's just a lot of questions on...
A lot of design questions.
Design questions on turf.
I just have, I have a follow up on that. The, at the end of the, at the fourth quarter report, there was also, there was $400,000 that had been reserved in FY '22 as, to cover things that maybe we hadn't anticipated that we thought we would need to transfer from the fund balance and we ended up not. Are we, can we add that to the 625? So, so really what we're saying is there's 1.1.025 of unreserved fund balance?
Some of which we have to keep.
Right, and that was my next question. We have to have at least 2.5%?
It's in policy, it's...
We don't actually...
So we can't clear all that out?
Yeah, we, we actually can, it's not our policy to do so. We do not have a mandated 2.5, we have a recommended 2.5. So we could dip a little below 2.5, which puts us into like dangerous territory somewhat because then we don't not, then we, our rainy day fund goes away. But we could bring it down to like 2.2 or 2, if we wanted.
What, I guess the recommended or the, what we have used is 2. We end up with 2.51, the 652 is 2.51, which is 130 K above the 2 is what the fourth quarter report says. So I'm not mandated, but recommended, I think it's 2, what we have always talked about.
Is 2%?
Is 2%. And that's, the, what we have now is 2.51%, which is 652, I'm not counting the other that's out there. The 652 is 2.51.
Can you give me a solid number amount on what's the 2%? What is that? That's...
It's about 520.
So we're talking like, maybe like, my math, my math skills are not great, we're talking like maybe if we bring down to 2, like a 300 K gap or so? We're talking like, maybe if we bring it down to 2, like a 300K gap or so?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, what's the gap?
I said if we, if we brought our fund balance down to 2%, adding the 400,000 to get to, we're like at, we're like at a $300,000 gap.
We need to be in the room that has the whiteboard walls. Seriously, I can't follow this math in my head.
The favorite room in the house, me ever. That's our greatest clarification.
Right.
This 2% has...
2% of what?
Total budget.
Of the total budget, okay.
A total annual operating budget, right? For our district?
Yes, which is about 26 million. I'm not clear about the 400,000, but it's, if it's 400,000, you add the 652 to that, that's over 1 million. The 2% is about 520, so we are 520 less. Not 300, but 520.
So it's 520 that we could borrow, which would bring us, I don't think it's a shortfall. So that brings a shortfall to like... Yeah, 3 to 400,000.
Where's that 400,000 coming from? I'm sorry.
That's, that's what we would have to make up with general or...
No, no, no. He's asking a question.
That was in our finance committee report. Were you there again?
It was, it was some sort of over...
We didn't use it.
It was money we didn't use that went into the fund balance. Yeah.
We had...
Yeah.
Okay, you saw, okay, all right.
Can I clarify what timelines look like? So one timeline is we use our money, some of the money from the fund balance, and the rest we bond for March. And that is only for the track plus maintenance. The other scenario is that we bond the remainder of the 5 million from the 1.5, you know, the money that we have plus, and we just bond the whole thing. But because we don't have enough answers to all the turf, we have to wait another year to be able to do that work? Or with the sign?
You can release the engineers to get a shovel-ready project and have it sitting there for, whether you do a special, whether you... The audit comes back and says you got more money, or you bond it, or you make it a line item on a ballot somewhere and you're just, you're ready to go. Or it's two years from now and you got 90% of it sitting there and they just, when you, when you...
You budget for it.
You budget, you budget, okay, we're gonna, instead of asking for X amount of dollars this year, we ask for 50% this year and 50% next year, and...
Which of the differences around $300,000 would make the most sense? You wouldn't want to go bond.
Yeah, you could just make it the capital budget.
Well, the windows are already taking that up.
Yes.
Or you could add to it.
Or you could add to it. You could, there's some other differences that you could use for budgeting.
You could ask for $500,000 pieces of the 252.
Yeah. That's ready.
Red?
What do we know about the waiting question?
We don't know anything more about the waiting question.
The waiting question.
So we have potentially a foul storm. Potentially, there's really significant changes to how waits sort of play out. We're actually in a, you know, minus all of this, we're in a, we're in a, we're in a good state. We're in a good place for that. If we kind of clean out everything down to 2% and find $300,000 in our budget, we can make this project go forward. We can minus, I think, minus the turf. But do we make ourselves uncomfortably vulnerable in the event that the waiting process comes out and really hurts more than we expected? Is that... I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, I think we want to keep all of the, all of the possible sort of pressures on the district in mind.
And there's another one we have.
Jim's drawing it right now. PCBs are also another pressure.
Yes.
PCB testing.
Yeah.
I'll throw it out because this is the time to throw this stuff out there. One of the things that you'll see in the facilities report that Anna will be sending around next week is we gotta do a roof study. We gotta, we gotta really, when, if you cast, I don't know how many were here, when the bond vote was brought forward, replacing this whole roof was, was on the slate. Well, what happened at that point was the understanding by the design team was not correct as to what the system could be used. So that, the replacement cost went from X to 4 times X. So they chose, so our predecessors chose an option that was half X. And they put a silicone coating over the membrane. Well, that membrane is still up there and it's still old and it's still shrinking and it still cracks a little bit. And we get leaks every now and again. At some point, we're not gonna be able to stay ahead of those. I'm not super concerned, I'm concerned about it and we gotta get it on our radar. But also, it's middle school. The middle school addition roof was put on in 1982, or whenever that addition was put on in the 80s. It's a ballasted roof, so the sun hasn't been beating down on it. But it's 40 years old. So that's something that we should, that this year, one of my priorities is to really map that all out and give us some realistic expectations of when we're gonna be looking at that. Because that one, this one, when we get a leak, we can go up there and we can find it and it's easy enough to take care of. Over there, a ballasted roof is a little more difficult to get up there and find the leak and plug it. So I think once that one starts to go, it won't take too many years of it being a real pain in the neck before we go, we gotta get, we gotta switch this. Now, luckily, Union Roof is good, Roxbury's roof is good, and most of Main Street is good, so... But...
Kristin?
I have a question just about like order of operations. So like what comes first? The permitting or the bond? I mean, if you're gonna launch a bond on something, right? You're trying to drum up public support for things and you want to know that you have a project that's doable. I don't know what kind of hiccups could come up in the permitting process. I don't know if you foresee anybody, but I'm just curious. Like, do you kind of cross your fingers and hope the bond's gonna come through? And in the meanwhile, you kind of just have the permit, you know, process underway? How does, how do those two things interface?
They would get, they would, very early on, the engineering team would go to the permitting, the jurisdictions in question, and say, this is what we're proposing. What do you see? What do we... They would not go blindly and hope it's gonna pass. They would work very closely very early on. And we would have another, we would hire a cost estimator in December to say, where are we at? What are we doing? And then we'd have, we'd hire another cost estimator again in early February so that before you put in your warning, we got the best information we have and we'd put a 10 to 15% contingency on it. Now luckily out there, also, the other thing to let you know, we've retained Stone Environmental to do some environmental testing out there. Make sure that we've got clean soils and we don't have to worry about that sort of thing. They're also doing that at the middle school playground just so as we go over there, we have a sense, we know it's sort of a proactive measure. So we would, we would move forward in this, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't just say, go for it and hope for the best when the bids came in. We would, we would cost estimate it. They would work with the, they would work with A&R and whoever else they have to get permits from. And we would have a professional cost estimator look at it twice. We would also, a lot of the projects that we're gonna be doing, and we have to work through this a little bit, is we would maybe even, depending on the funding, we would get a construction manager involved as early as possible as well that can help us with the cost, that could actually really say, it's not the estimator, this is actually how much we would charge and work with the design team possibly on this project to say, okay, well, let's do it a little differently. This one's a little bit different that I think maybe just probably a straight bid would be the way to go on this because there's really nothing. An asphalt road's an asphalt road and nobody's got a different, a different solution to 3/4 inch crust stone and 3/4 inch crust stone. It is what it is.
Do we, do, sorry, do we have any reason to believe that the soil might be contaminated or that it's being contaminated?
Not here, other than it's just, and it contaminates the wrong term. It's, and I'm getting a little bit above my pay grade here, but it's urban soils. We could take, we could have taken the soils at Union Elementary and spread it out on the State House lawn. It was not dirty soil. It was soil that was in an area that's, that was designated urban soils. And take this all, a little bit of ground. It's soils that are in downtowns, then they used to burn coal and have, you know, it was the soil that's here. And the real restriction is you can't, we couldn't take that soil and bring it to the stump dump. We could spread it on the courthouse lawn, but we couldn't take it to the stump dump because it wasn't designated the same area where the soils came from. This is, we believe this is a green site. This is never, there wasn't anything here before the school. So there's really no, other than sort of just the residue coming from the air. But there's no burnt-down buildings or old coal storage bins or anything like that here. And again, Main Street, it was a neighborhood. So I don't think we would find any of that kind of stuff. But it was, it was a little neighborhood that was burning coal for 100 years, so...
I was gonna say, I lived behind Main Street for a while and we had our soil tested. It was actually pretty bad.
Yeah. But, but again, but that's, but that's, that's why we work with engineers in the design of things. So we balance the site. So we don't have, come up with a design that says, okay, we got 200 yards of soil to get rid of. We incorporate it into the design so you don't have to get rid of it.
Red?
I guess how, how does the bond process work, first of all? And secondly, has there ever been a sort of dual bond process? Where you just put to voters, would you like to fund 1.8? Or would you like to fund 3.8? I don't know, that's not really...
No, we wouldn't do that. We would make a decision before then. We'd get the community input beforehand. And I'm gonna admit that I've never gone through a bond process. Jim, you have?
I have.
As a former board member, or before the Montpelier-Roxbury Public Schools came about. Because I came in, Andrew and I both came in when that bond was being realized. So when construction had started five years ago. So neither of us were here for how the board went about that process.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even remember, is it... Yeah, it took a little bit of time to align all the pieces.
Yeah, but there's, it, in thinking back to my days of doing these sorts of things is, you know, you really tried to, you know, you, you went to town meeting day to say, do you want to do this project? And the town said, yeah, we want to do it. And then you had, the business manager got to work with the bond bank to have the bond ready to, before the contracts were signed in the spring.
Yeah.
What's the downside of waiting a year?
Cost.
Cost, the cost, yeah. It's just gonna get more expensive.
Uh huh.
And it's just a year of not being able to use it.
Right.
Jim?
I was just wondering, one of the main reasons we were exploring the turf field or doing things to the interior field when the track project first came along was we thought it would provide some like efficiencies if we're already moving dirt and we have machinery. Is that reflected in this third column? Do you think that's captured, that that, or is that presuming all other? Is that presuming if this was a standalone project?
I think that goes to her comment before, like, is it gonna be, is it fundamentally, is it gonna be more expensive to do it in two steps versus one? Yeah, I'm sure.
Right, but is that what we're looking at?
No, this is, this is, if, this is, if you want to add it on this project,
Okay.
1.3 or the 1.6.
With that expense, because it sounds like it's just not practical to do, like, we don't really have the option in terms of where the design is to decide to do the whole thing in a year, including the turf field.
No, and I think we would, this is, this is a major project. And you would want, you would, you would want three turf reps coming in here and talking with the athletic director to say, this is what it is. And saying, this is our knee injury report and we would like to, whatever, when the, when they come in and say, yep, our little granules are, are safe for the environment. And we say, well, this isn't South Carolina, this is Vermont. So our level of what's considered safe might be a little different. Prove it to us, what, you know, what really's in these things and...
And the river, the river's gonna cover it at some point, we all know that.
Environmental lawyer over here.
It's, it's really, it's, it's, the difference is, when, when the, it's somewhat cavalier, what the engineer said is you're building a road and you're gonna cover it with some mushy stuff. That's what the track is. It's, it's building a road and putting some, so it's not that big of a deal. This next level is, you want to make sure you do it right.
So, so kind of my follow-up question is, if the advantage to moving on the track portion, with the option to do the turf field later now is cost, do the efficiencies of doing it all at once make up? Is there a likelihood that it could make up?
Do you ever win against inflation? I don't know. I, my guess is it's...
Hard to predict?
I think it's hard to predict. Because if, because if there was a hard answer, everybody would outweigh inflation or... Just by the nature of people build, I mean, look at inflation now in construction and people are building like crazy, you know? Now, it's a little bit different here because we're not making money on this, so...
And, and when are we gonna know whether we have to tear this building apart for PCBs?
We are not slated to be tested for PCBs, Andrew just said, for a year.
I think the first buildings start in 2023.
No, no, they've already tested, they've already tested.
No, no, our buildings.
Our buildings.
Yeah, no, we've gotten our schedule. And it was, I think that one or two of the buildings are next summer and the other two are the following summer.
Montpelier High School and Roxbury are the two that are up first because of the date in which these buildings were built. And...
To the summer of 23?
That's what they told us, however, they have already pushed it back. They have figured it out.
They've only done four buildings, I think, so far.
They've done six.
Six is not what it is.
So those, they have funds to support if there is a change?
They did put 2.5 million. Nobody can access that right now, including my friend Mark Tucker down in Kebbit School, who can't use his gym at the moment. They, they had no plan on how to get that money out to schools. And so it's just sitting there right now. And Tom Flanagan in Burlington would really like to access some of that money too. And he's not gonna, you know, like, that money will be gone with the first rounds. You know, they tested six schools, two of whom had PCBs at a higher level than the state put. So chances are, that money's gonna be extinguished before we get to, before we test.
Jim?
So I just wanted to summarize or reflect back, and, because it seems like we're kind of winding to the end of possibly our conversation. We heard from a lot of parents. I've spent way too much time reading about artificial turf, which is not the same as AstroTurf, and the impact on student athletes.
It's done.
Yep. I've heard from a lot of student athletes, their parents, from coaches of other schools. I've heard some really compelling reasons why a turf field is actually a good idea, including that it might be one of the few things that if we invest money in, it might actually bring in revenue. There are entities like Capital Soccer and other surrounding schools that would rent it. And that there are, any article you find about injuries and things like that, you can find articles that dispute that. My friend in Newton, Massachusetts told me that they've actually banned all artificial turf in all of their parks and their schools. There's a big lawsuit in Martha's Vineyard if anybody really wants to go down the rabbit hole. But I just really want to, want to reflect back that we really heard a lot of really compelling reasons why it actually does make a lot of sense. We heard from a lot of people, we heard from students. I literally, you know, I feel like I've sort of waded into this because I feel like I thought it maybe was an opportunity because we had the track coming in and we had that support. So I feel really torn because I feel like we have a lot of good momentum and support for this. It seems like it actually could be something that would be a longer-term investment. It could draw students here. It could be another sort of asset to this community that would actually entice folks to come here, even though I don't know anyone who could afford to buy a house in Montpelier right now. So I don't want to be short-sighted. That being said, I do not feel comfortable making a multimillion-dollar decision, especially when there is still so much unknown in one board meeting. So I, I just felt like it was important to reflect that, that we did hear from really invested, intelligent people in our community who really wanted to advocate for this. And, you know, the reality of what's coming down the pike is really hard to, to wrestle with.
Thanks for going down the rabbit hole for the rest of us and summarizing that for us, Jill. I, where I'm, just where I'm at right now, and my thinking could change on this, is I definitely, definitely don't, we can't make a multimillion dollar decision in one meeting. I actually feel pretty uncomfortable about making it within one month. Because in addition to everything that we have heard and I, you know, and I am in favor of us having a, a new track, I also think we have to take the financial considerations, even of the base option, very seriously. And I would like to explore the idea of using bond money for the base version, maybe the, including the turf and new roof things. I remember that the bond that we did that was sort of the marquee item was the playground, but there were many of, many other things that were included in that. And it feels like, let's use this opportunity to have a broader conversation about what our facilities need for the long run, rather than try and scramble and grab the last of our reserve funds to cover just the, the small, the base. I shouldn't call it the small, the base version of this plan. Because I think there are other options for our reserve funds that we're not talking about. And, and I want to, I want us to do a project that is a real investment in the community and not just be like, oh, okay, we think we can get this done and we gotta get it done really fast. So I, I just, my, where I sit right now is I would, I think waiting a year is a bummer for those of us who are, you know, our student athletes who are currently or very soon to be in the system, but it is also only a year for us to really figure this out. And, you know, I know that that was a real, that was an experience that the kids who were at Union, back when we started the conversation about the playground, it was a real shame that the kids who were there at Union and were like, go and we get a new playground. Were actually in middle school by the time the playground happened. But it is also sort of the reality of, this is a complicated issue. And it's, it, and I think we should take the care and time that it deserves. And I'm on to the two.
I will just sort of like echo the same sentiments that Mia and Jill are bringing up. And just being on the Facilities and Energy Committee, there was a lot of information provided at that meeting and the last meeting that has not even been discussed at these public school board meetings that just raise a lot of questions, you know, around whether this, we should move forward this quickly on this project. And one of the things that I'd like Andrew to sort of, I don't know, reiterate or explain, is that there is a replacement cost, so when we're talking about revenue, potential revenue for a turf field, there's also a replacement window, I think he said about 15 years and about $1 million, but I want Andrew to speak to that. So that would be, you know, probably $70,000 to $100,000 a year if you break it down like that. You know, if we have to replace the turf every 15 years at the cost of a million dollars, then that really puts that whole concept of a potential revenue into different light. So I would need to understand all of those questions and, and financial implications a little bit better before feeling comfortable moving forward, even with the base plan.
Amanda?
Do you want Andrew to answer that or is that?
The final, again, go back. The, the track, we should anticipate as we move forward, that the, the, a track and or, and a turf field would need to be replaced at, in 15 to 20 years, probably 20 years, we'll say that. The best information we had regarding what UVM is doing at the moment, it was sort of the half the cost of building it in the first place. So here, it would be, you know, eight, $800,000 in today's dollars to, to put a new surface on that. Again, the coating on the tracks, that's significantly less. You know, that's, you're, you're truly building a road out there and you don't need that cost. And you just, you layer, layer another coat of, of surfacing on the existing. You don't have to even take anything away, so that's a good piece.
I want to appreciate your presentation and the committee that has worked so hard on this and Jill for reaching out to families. I feel the same, kind of in the realm of really wanting to take it slow and like get feedback and think about this bond issue. Maybe think of capital, you know, funds, how communities can support, so that, you know, like, there are rich people that want to donate. You know, something like that, that we can get creative around, you know, people that really want to invest in this community and in its particular projects, so that the bond is not so much, I think that we can think about it. And I would love to see us taking it slow. And I really, and love Chris Curtis when he was speaking about inclusivity and, or was it maybe James? I don't know, one, somebody was talking today about, it just, you know, the amount of students that can access both track and field. And not just having just the track and that we can think, you know, how many more kids we can provide these athletic opportunities to. So I would love to just, for us to take it slow and appreciate all the work, but saying, let's hold off and let's do it right for our communities. And let's see the big picture with all the other things. That's where I am.
I would also echo that, and I think it'll be helpful to see the facilities report in the next couple of weeks. Is that coming before the board? So we can kind of get some of those other big projects that might be on the horizon and kind of just pull those into context. And I think echoing with Rhett said before, you know, I feel like we're feeling the tremors of Act 127, but there's really no writing on the wall yet, but just based on like the Lincoln letter, you know, there definitely, it was, where it sounds like we're gonna have difficult decisions ahead of us. And, and given that, I feel like I would want to have a better understanding of that before going through this, this reserve fund also.
Rhett?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we're gonna think about a bond, we want to be as comprehensive as we can be. There are a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of pressures that we don't know about. There's a lot of bits of, you know, there's a lot of facilities questions. And I think that if we're gonna ask for the community to make a big investment, we want to be as, as comprehensive and, and stable and sure-footed and confident in, in what we're presenting to people as we can be, you know, for, for all of our buildings, you know, and, and I, I want a track as much as anybody. You know, and I, I, I'm, I'm committed to seeing the process through so that we can have that track. Whether there's a turf or not, I don't know, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm personally committed to making sure that we have a track that, you know, that's what we committed that 1.5 million dollars for. I, I'm certainly committed to that. I just, if we're gonna have to put, to put forth a bond, I want it to be smart.
Anything else? I mean, I think I concur with, with everyone people have said, and I think it also would be good to find out what the implications of the waiting study are. And I am maybe more worried about PCBs than others, but Burlington is, is in Macy's with a high school and they had to take out a, what?
95 million?
Yeah, a, a, a large, large bond. Yeah, to build a new high school. So given the date this building was built, it is of concern. So in terms of.
I have for next steps for us to work on, get some more information about the bond process. And what goes into that work. And then thinking about it in the next, next board meeting will help as well, because you'll see in next board meeting is Andrew's annual facilities report. So you'll get a broad overview of the facilities and we can start that thinking of, if you're going for a bond, you might as well go for a bond. And figure out what else is in that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, no, we should not use a bond for.
One thing.
To fill little holes.
It's, it's funny, when they pass the bond.
Here, was that $5 million?
Yeah.
It was seven, 56 up in Winuski and it was 75, the original one for Burlington was 75, you know? And if you just broke it out square footage wise, we should have asked for a lot more at that one, just sort of relative to, we're just being a little too modest at that one, but.
Andrew said, more than once if he and I were in that process, it would have been different.
But, and, and it's, it's something that, you know, with this last couple of years, this is, this is the new phase, right? This is, we have to focus, instead of just sort of playing defense, we now, with regards to facilities, have to start playing a little offense and looking down the road. Looking right in front of us the last couple of years.
Libby, could you add to the list of next steps? I think if we're going to take the time, it's worth to exploring, as Andrew said, having three turf, I don't know, companies have a conversation with Libby. Should we go, should we start that now or not yet? Not yet, okay.
No.
We will. If, if we go that route, we decide to go down the bond, bond route, then those conversations will happen.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Once, once we, this, this was that first sort of, let's look at the size of the cake here and.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's wish list time. If we're gonna do a bond, if we're gonna do a transformative bond, let's do a transformative bond.
I agree, I agree.
We're, we're gonna look at the forest, right? That we need and I, and so the bond, I, I would be interested in learning how it works with Roxbury too, like how bonds work. In terms of like that, and then.
They work like your mortgage.
Yeah. I, I'll learn.
I'll be right there next year, not.
And I guess, is there infrastructure grants coming in or no? No, there's nothing?
No, anything worth. There, that's a big push for the Vermont Superintendent's Association with the legislature. That is one of the VSA's pushes, is to bring back the infrastructure grants for schools because they were done away with quite a long time ago. And because of that, there's a lot of deferred maintenance across the state. So it's definitely on the top of mind.
Yeah, I thought there was still an R around, a new S or R, a round of infrastructure stuff. We've already accounted for that. Yeah, COVID relief, infrastructure specifically.
You want to send me that email? I don't think, I don't think, I haven't seen anything on that.
Maybe that's why I haven't heard about it.
Yes, way back when we were talking about infrastructure federal dollars, they took that out. That didn't make it pass. Oh, I thought you were talking about the state, I'm sorry.
Just want to put it out there, Jill mentioned that there aren't a lot of people that can afford homes in Montpelier right now. There's a lot of space in Roxbury, there's a lot of space, there's no zoning. I just want to put that out there. It's one of the only places where there's literally no zoning. Like, you can build anything you want, nobody's gonna have a problem with it. There's a beautiful little school there, we take care of it, you know, for young kids, as long as that school is strong, you know?
Come to this high school and eventually gorgeous track and.
Beautiful, yeah, there's a lot of space, just saying.
Good PSA there, Rhett, thank you.
Around, you know how like the Montpelier just bought that country club? Has, has this school district ever collaborated, like with the city council around like types of property like that? Like, it's so beautiful to play soccer over there.
Then you can speak more to this, I mean, we used to, the city and the school district used to be combined. And then by statute, we had to separate. And we still work with them a great deal. We use Dog River Fields, they'll use our gyms in the winter times, things of that nature. But we're, we're, we're separate at the moment, I mean, we're separate by statute. But we still have a good, great relationship with them and we help, we help each other when we can.
No, but I think you're right. One of the people who had mentioned that we have less fields than we used to. And it was true that part of why I think the community supported the, the purchase of that property was the idea that there would be community rec fields that could be used. So that might help also alleviate some of the challenges here, if we can use that the way we used to use the rec fields. I mean, long term.
And, and the, I mean, the little kids are playing soccer over there.
Beautiful. It is beautiful. I wonder about how we get our athletes there. Yeah. For after school practice, but, I mean, that's, we don't have to have that conversation right now, but it's a good point.
I think Matt's done a great job with, especially with getting rid of the mud lot, that we have that extra field, field here for the middle school. So we've done, we've tried to get everybody here and it seems to be working pretty well. We do, again, we do use the Dog River, but the Dog River site isn't maintained as well as, as.
Our fields.
Clear fields, yeah. But not much flat land in Montpelier.
Or gym space.
I wonder if the state, sorry, and then I'll stop pontificating. There are a lot of parking lot spaces that we used to fill up as state employees that remain empty. I'm one of the few state employees in my building that comes in. I wonder if there is like a potential down the road to turn one of those parking lots into another field. I mean, it's just wasted pavement. So I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk to BGS about that one.
You need to stank it on it, will you?
Yeah, yeah.
I think they'd be happy to, they're selling a lot of their properties in town.
As added to the bond, we'll buy.
Buy a parking lot, just kidding, just kidding.
All right, thank you, Andrew, this is, this is.
Thank you very much, Andrew.
Yeah, super helpful and, you know, I, I think there's, there's a firm part of commitment to all these projects. We just want to do it right and do it efficiently and know what we're getting into and know some of these unanticipated near term horizon possible costs.
And there'll be a quiz on the facilities report, so make sure you read every 78, every one of those 78 pages.
I did last year and I will this year.
Lovely, a lot of this. Soon it comes out that federal study.
So equity committee update.
Do you want to bleed on this first?
Yeah, so we have been looking at, the SBA released a small grants opportunity for equity projects. And we've taken a look and one idea that we have that we wanted to get some feedback on was in pursuing a process to arrive at kind of a working, shared understanding and definition of what educational equity is in our district. And such that, you know, we have our DEI policy. It doesn't necessarily have like a stated definition of educational equity in it. It sort of gets at it in a couple of different ways. But, you know, thinking about that, just as collectively as a group, so that we are really kind of working from, you know, the same starting point when we're thinking about, you know, utilizing our beloved equity lens policy review tool. And that, so we're starting from a, you know, just a commonplace of, of understanding what equity is and what it looks like in our district. And, and I think that would then kind of really, I think folks might have a, feel like they have a stronger understanding then of, of why we have the equity policy review tool and just kind of center that. Our committee did a lot of work on that and I don't know what its kind of status is in, in being used elsewhere, but I think we'd love to see that, you know, just have a life beyond the Google Drive. And, yeah, so that's, we're hoping to just get a little bit preliminary feedback from folks. Do you think that's good use of, the grants are $5,000, it is due October 17th, which is fast approaching. But they do ask for us to get some board input, you know, you know, did you get the go-ahead from your board? They would like for us to also, you know, have, have you had a conversation with your superintendent and is this in collaboration? Does it feel like this is a collaborative effort? So that was our big update and wanting, we could always send it around if people want more.
What would you spend the $5,000 on?
I think facilitation, so having, you know, like a, a couple, one, ideally two to three workshops and say like a, we were thinking it wouldn't be ideal to stretch it over, you know, weeks and months, but, you know, try to accomplish, you know, some kind of intensive workshop activity in, you know, over the course of four to six weeks, four to eight weeks, and trying to arrive at that definition. So, yeah, outside consultant to run a process.
If that makes sense to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need an approval and from Libby too for the grant? I think we need like the buy-in basically. The SBA one.
Formal approval here in the board?
Well, kind of like, some of the questions in there is like, have you talked to, is your superintendent on board with this? Is your board on board with this, right?
Yeah.
If we need approval actually, we just need to, to check in, which I think we.
Yeah, I think it was essentially a nod, they weren't active, you know, asking for a letter or anything, but that we've had a conversation, there's buy-in, we're kind of aligned as a board and with our superintendent, that we have like a clear unified objective.
And just as far as timing goes, the due date of the, for the grant submission is the 17th, which is before our next board meeting. So we were just hoping to get sort of like yay, thumbs up from the board if you agree that this is a good idea, that we should pursue this. And then we could work between now and the 17th with Libby to finesse language and whatever, to have it fall within parameters that would be both like how the grant is structured and also be something that it's, as the grant says, like a collaboration of the board and the super, and, you know, what the administration is doing. Just like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have time to come back to the board in a board meeting to say, look at the actual grant submission. But I don't think we would need to either.
So it does ask, has the school board authorized the application for this mini grant? Is it a collaboration of the school board and the superintendent? And have you notified the SU, sorry, SD? Sorry, SD Business Office Manager. So and those are just like check, yes, no questions.
Separated.
What's timeline beyond seventeen? When's the grant going to be awarded and what's the timeline beyond?
Yeah, so decisions are made by October twenty fourth. More notifications are made by the thirty first. Funds must be committed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty three and spent by August fifteenth, twenty twenty three. So it's got, you know, fairly significant timeline, especially for a pretty small amount of money.
June of next year.
Yeah, yes, they would need to be committed by.
Next year.
Yeah, and then used by August twenty twenty three.
So it would give us the time to find someone, make a plan for what the, what it would look like. We have a concept right now that we feel pretty good about, but it gives us the time to solidify that. If we got them.
Yeah, so if he, if he got the grant, then we would look at doing something in spring or summer next year. Okay? Just trying to get a sense.
So what if you look into that?
Yeah, a blessing. Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Chris.
Sure.
Only in prevention discussion. Why this is to.
Yeah, so I just been thinking a lot about, I know that a lot of the community members are doing, you know, Dr. Hauser and the old brain belong had a little webinar or like Zoom meeting just to hear about, you know, what people thought as what we can do as well. And I didn't listen to it unfortunately. But I know that we had others, some parents that sent us some comments and what's her name? Ah, forgive me. She's, what's her name? Adrian sent us like a little chart of what some of the ideas that they had. And I, I thought so, I've been thinking about like what our role is. And just hearing from some of the parents about what the gaps are and then having our training. I wanted to suggest that we as a board do a series of community listening sessions for the next few months. And we can do it individually as groups just to hear like what ideas we can do to work with the, with the community to kind of tackle this problem that we have. And and maybe to find out about what those gaps are from their perspectives, right? Like I know that we're, you know, the administration, Libby and Jess are doing a lot of work and I appreciate that. But I, I feel like we need to kind of fill that gap between the parents and just communicate, communicate and be able to be responsive. Perhaps what that looks like at the end is a collaboration with the parents groups around some sort of magical thing that can happen with our kids. So that's what I wanted to bring. I think that I will be willing to support and doing a few community listening sessions just to, you know, hear from the community and for us to kind of be a little more involved to tackle this. And so that's the discussion I wanted to have. Or that's what I'm proposing.
Starting out with listening sessions?
Yeah.
Community listening.
Yeah.
I'll just say I, I think that's a great idea and I would be also be happy to sit in on them or help organize them and and attend. I went to one that was caregiver organized and it's clear that they're just, it would be really helpful for the conversation to keep, keep going. And a conversation in a way that's far different than we can have during public comment at a, at a board meeting. And I have, I've started having lots of ideas of what we could do, but I also feel like it's before trying to act on any of those, we should do more listening and and discussing with the community.
I can ensure that Rhett and I are gonna be having a community listening session out in Roxbury in a couple of weeks on October sixteenth. So it's certainly one of the things that we can, you know, mention, you know, ideally, I think it's inviting people into the room to have them bring things up that is, you know, is is current and happening for them. And also, you know, mentioning that we're aware of, there's been some dialogue of and that we're just, we're available. So.
I think it's something good to hear from the community. Sounds like you wanna take a lead in putting those together?
Yeah, yeah. Amanda, a few board meetings ago when we last discussed this, you floated the idea of some outbound communication. You know, we hadn't like solidified anything. And it, it strikes me that one thing we could do that would be in conjunction with this and almost like an invitation to join them would be an, like an op-ed in the local papers that is a, you know, we, we recognize that this is a problem and we want to do what we can. You know, I, I don't know exactly what it would say, but something like that. And it would, it could conclude with an invitation to join these anyway.
And is our process that Jim writes op-eds for the board or is there?
I mean, I can certainly, I think the board group or someone else has wrote an op-ed, that would be fine as well.
We could correct it.
Yeah.
This makes me think of, I don't know if this might help sort of fill out this sort of outgoing communication, but Libby, you had said something about how there's a need for community. At one of our recent board member meeting, board meetings, you said, you said you, you that the phrase learning loss is out there and you feel like there's a, it's more of a community, there's a loss of community. I, I kept, that keeps, that has been bouncing around my head a little bit and I was wondering if you would just expand on that a tiny bit. I wonder if that might help any of the kind of communication that comes out from the board about some of the needs that are out there that, I don't know if that, if that, yeah, do you think that, that some of our concerns about the sort of social emotional climate that's out there predate the pandemic? Or is there an element of the community loss that occurred that sort of has been fueling some of these behaviors and some of these, some of these problematic circumstances that we see for some of our families, I mean, some of our kids? It doesn't feel like the pandemic made, you know, made it easier for kids that were struggling in the first place. I don't know if that.
I would never say that there was not social emotional learning needs prior to the pandemic because there certainly was.
Yeah, well, I know.
A lot, you know, we don't wanna idealize that time period like the nineteen fifties are idealized, right? Because there are a lot of things that we were working on in school systems with kids around social emotional learning then too. I, when I say community loss, I mean that kids, particularly our adolescents, where becoming more independent without mom and dad right next to them and being in groups of friends and independent situations is possibly one of the biggest places of learning for kids. They make a whole lot of mistakes doing that. They, and peers help correct those mistakes, you know, in the moment. They know, they learn how to talk to each other in a different way at that stage of the game. And that was done in a very different way, if at all. So some kids, many kids, didn't have really any way to do that kind of communication. I think of my kid who went through the pandemic as a sixth, seventh and eighth grader, right? Did interaction, but it was all over online, right? So we, we allow, we let, I don't know if anybody else did this maybe, but as a parent, like we let off all our like rules around technology because that was where he was interacting with his friends. And we could hear him laughing and screaming and doing all, all the things that we wanted him to do in that instance. However, it still has an impact on him because when he's sitting around and we're like, go hang out with your friends, he almost doesn't know how to do that, right? Whereas for me, when I was young, like you just went out and saw, found somebody who was around, you know? So it's a completely different mentality. And that's what I mean by like community loss is that I have a ninth grade kid now and a, and a sixth grade kid who don't know how to call a friend and say, hey, what are you doing? You know, like that's hard, that's a hard thing for them to wrap their heads around now. And that's just my kids who are, who've done pretty well and, you know, throughout this whole thing. So I think that our kids, now they're coming together. We didn't, we didn't do a good enough job last year when there were less restrictions in place with no pods and all that kind of stuff of, of anticipating that they were going to need more restrictions, right? We tried to make it as if there was no need for that and there, there's still a need for it. And then we slowly have to scaffold them back to knowing how to interact together in the masses.
And it's exacerbated by the fact that the technology we have cuts a lot of the, I mean, yeah, like if I wanted to know what a new album looked, felt, was like in nineteen eighty four, I had to find a friend who had it and I had to go hang out with him or her and listen to it. I couldn't just press a button on a phone. Like, yeah, if I wanted to call a friend, I would have to call, I'd have to probably interact with another family member like a parent. I would have to like have that conversation. I couldn't just send a silent text. If I wanted to know what my friends are doing, I could not look it up on Snapchat.
Yeah, it's a whole different world.
There are so many social interactions and opportunities for social learning that have just been killed by this device.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole different world and it was exasperated by, but it was exasperated by the pandemic. You know, I, I can keep talking about my kids. My, my daughter is one of the most lovely people on earth and I promise you she is. She, she like takes a picture of her face, face, making a weird face on Snapchat and then puts her phone down. I'm like, what did you just do? Who did you just send that? That's weird. What did you do? Like, why don't you just call them and talk to them instead of snapping a strange face? It's just bizarre, you know? And then you look at our Snapchat feed and all of her, like that's how they're almost communicating through weird faces like. So it's just, and it's part of it is I think the adults trying to wrap our heads around this. And so this is kind of the lightweight part of like what's happening right now with how our kids are communicating. But there is a heavier side to that too, that when you say something that's nasty or belittling or demeaning or whatever into a video game with a group of people who you don't know who you're playing with, right? And you've been doing that for a year and a half and then you get in a classroom of kids who you can see them and you still say the same things. That's bad. You know, like they're, they haven't learned that kind of interaction.
It's unchecked experimentation.
That's a beautiful way of saying it. Yeah.
You know, and it is, I mean, it's just part of, anyway, it's a diatribe, but like it's, it's, I mean, they are separate and not, you know? I mean, I think the two compounded is, has us arriving in a place that feels pretty treacherous for some kids and pretty formative, but.
Yeah, and we had Joelle Van Lett here when we had the half day. Joelle was here. And Joelle and I both share the same opinion, but I feel like putting Joelle's name behind it has more weight because she's much smarter than I am in these things. She's like, the kids are gonna come, they're, it's gonna come around. You know, they're gonna settle. We're gonna, you know, our first graders or second graders or third graders are back in where they should be in school with friends, you know, learning how to do this kind of thing. So it will settle down. And what do we do in the meantime with kids who are making some decisions socially that are not appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, this makes me think about how, you know, in terms of like, right, what can we do? What's like, what's within our purview? And I know there's, there's been some discussion about doing more, you know, direct like family outreach and workshops and things. I mean, I think there's a lot of parents swimming out in the abyss, trying to find their way through this, like not only just like the iGenitis, you know, that, that plagues a lot of our kids and them trying to sort out their, their social worlds with all these, you know, these, these new tools. But, you know, in addition to kind of hearing from them, it would be great if the district can really do. I mean, I can remember that growing up. I mean, there was workshops for parents, you know, as we think about how we can kind of partner with each other as a school district and parents and come together to have a shared, better understanding of our kids and where they're at. So we can better, right, education, a certain percentage happens in the school building and a lot of it happens at home. And so that how we can be working, you know, in concert with one another and having these shared understandings. As a board member, I would be interested, you know, how we allocate funds to such things.
Which is why community listening session around this specific topic will help us kind of frame those conversations. Because I think the culture shift also starts at home, right? And how we have those conversations with the kids. And so I think of what's acceptable and what's not. And, and I think, you know, this is a beautiful community. And there's a lot of people that want, that are really open to have conversations. And I think that a lot of beautiful things can come out of it, of like, just like, you know, listening and kind of trying to come up with solutions that then we can bring together, whether it's for the budget or like for grants that we write together with, you know, Pi or, you know, some of the community groups, whatever it is that we need. But hear from the people that are on the ground. I feel like there's a lot of solution oriented people too, not just, and that we can learn from. And that we can bridge that gap a little bit, so.
Yeah, I know, building opportunities for social interaction because Libby's absolutely right, like kids, kids learn by doing and they learn by interacting and they learn from each other as much as they learn from adults, especially as they get older. Great. Well, thank you for bringing this topic up, Amanda, and for sharing some leadership here and getting.
Just one more question. Are there, I know Murp's Pi, I understand that there's some kind of grant or funds that they have and they were sort of reaching out to maybe Anna or something. I'm not exactly sure. I heard through third hand, through my wife. I'm not, I'm not so connected. I don't know how.
There's, I can, there's $5,000 that was a grant that Pi received last year that has now been used for social and emotional learning. So there's a lot of ideas that are coming up around doing workshops for parents, around bullying harassment and like. So it wasn't clear how that money could be spent and it kind of just sat there. So now it's like, we need to start it. It's, I mean, we don't need to, there's no timeline, but this, this topic also seems like a one that a lot of the Pi groups want to invest some of that in there, so. And I think they had conversations with Jess already, kind of like trying to collaborate around some of that stuff.
Thank you. Policy monitoring. Do I have a motion to approve the V eight electronic communications between employees and students monitoring report?
I make a motion to approve the monitor report.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Executive session.
I can put the language in for you. I put it on the agenda for you.
All right, I got this.
This looks like it's like combined into one motion, don't they? Don't we need like two motions?
May.
First, three D.
Oh, you may. Okay, you can do it in one motion.
No, you need, you need to.
Because this, this. The first one, this is the hard one. The second one is just to go into executive session. Now we can remember.
Okay. So I move that the board make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the positions that the board may take in upcoming labor negotiations would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage. And therefore, the board votes to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations with its employees and personnel matters.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So now we, I move we go into an executive session? I move we go into an executive session.
Second.
Aye, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Great.